[Inaudible]
Prost.
Here.
Prost, here, Blue Island.
Here.
Blue Island, here, Dejada.
Here.
And here, Rita. Rita, Amson, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here, Holly.
Here.
Holly, here, Fairwell.
Here.
Fairwell, here, Osling.
Here.
Osling, here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here, Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here, Fulos. Fulos, Amson, Johnson, here. Johnson, here, call present.
Thank you very much. Next we move to the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes on the date of December 12th, 2017, and the social meeting is December 19th, 2017. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman here, we have a second. Second alderman, Fairwell.
Prost.
Aye.
Prost, aye, Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye, Dejada.
Aye.
Dejada, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next we move on to public comment again on limited to around three minutes pertinent to whatever's on the agenda. Whoever wants to approach the podium will just need your name and your actions.
My name is Ronald Young, I'm with the 12440 of Blue Island. I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation to Alderman Fairwell and Alderman Carr for helping us resolve the worries and concerns, or hopefully resolve, I should say hopefully, because it's not over yet, the worries and concerns that several citizens and I have over the hangover from the Jawaw with the lawsuit that could make Blue Island responsible for a big piece of eighteen million dollars if the lawsuit goes through. There was a court hearing yesterday, as you probably know, and nobody from the six communities in the Jawaw showed up for the hearing. We became quite alarmed, we sent a citizen representative down there, and we became quite alarmed, and I contacted Alderman Carr, and she got me in touch with Alderman Fairwell, who's on the Judiciary Committee, to help work on the problem. As you know, Fred Postal, from Postal Yore filed a lawsuit against the members of the Joint Action Water Agency when he was terminated, and Blue Island is a member of that agency, and as you know, the money terms of that thing are up to about eighteen million that he's asking for. We're very worried, we fought that Jawaw as soon as we found out it wasn't practical. Ten million dollars went down the toilet for them to do their survey, and we're responsible for about six hundred thousand of that for the bond issue that took place. I just want to remind you, since I can't ask you any questions of you last time, that on February eighth, in courtroom twenty-six oh one, the Daily Center, Judge Raymond Mitchell, presiding, has another scheduled hearing on this lawsuit. We urge you folks to be as concerned about this as we are. It's probably knowledge in court records, that are on the internet, we feel it, we would be very disappointed if Blue Island ended up being responsible for a big piece of change, or has to spend an excessive amount of money in legal fees to fight it if they do something. We thank you for your time, I thank you for your time, I thank Alderman Fairwell, and I thank Alderman Candace Carr for working with a citizen for the best interest of our community, or a group of citizens, I should say. Thank you very much for your time. This is a good way for citizens and aldermen to work together quietly, without weaving their destiny or hollering on a red light, and have a good day.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year. Anyone else?
Well, Happy New Year to everyone. I just wanted to give a report, Neighborhood Watch Group Thirty-Seven, in November we gave out, we called them goodie bags, we gave goodie bags out to the seniors, but this year we had some added help. The Robert Reader Community Center, they gave me a lot of turkeys to give out. They had, he had extra turkeys, I gave out, some people, it was about four people, turkeys for Thanksgiving, and then he also, Bob Jackson, oh, he had a Christmas party there. It was wonderful. I never seen that many people in Blue Island show up for any kind of program, not even mine, you know? Lot of kids, he gave away toys, food, and plus, he still had some leftovers. So Christmas Eve, I stopped cooking, he delivered some more turkeys to my house, and I gave them to families in Blue Island. Not necessarily needed family, but people who I knew had kids in the family, or people who I thought maybe needed food. So I just wanted to thank Bob Jackson, it was wonderful. He gave out toy, food, so maybe I can give him a, I think he did a good job. And I'll forget, next month is Black Culture Night, so we'll be having our program. I'll remind you here in February, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Michael Wilson. I think I should introduce myself because one of the residents showed me some things that was written about me on the internet. Okay, so let me explain to you guys who I am. I'm a businessman, own over twenty-three different businesses. One of my detective agencies, yes, has been working here in the city with the mayor. I have not charged the city of Blue Island that one dollar. So we can find out from the residents what they really need the mayor to do, to try to help the town. We give that report back to the mayor, and back to the attorney. Secondly, after the mayor, they asked my bodyguard, after the mayor had an incident where someone took the lugs off his front tires while he was driving, that was brought to my attention, so yes, I did take three of my guys and start to give the mayor protection, if not one dollar charged to Blue Island. Once again, I'm a businessman, the trust of other individuals in the community, as I do during a whole state of Illinois. If any individual needs to know anything else about me, please let me know, and we can have that conversation as individuals. Outside of that, I would also like to ask the young man, well, I won't say young man, the gentleman that is the new police chief, please step up, please. Some of the services that you saw me and my guys and young ladies going through the town, that's what we were doing. We're going through the town, listening to what the residents had to say, and about what they needed to do, about the police chiefs as the mayor and attorney have understood. After giving them back support and everything, everyone talked about the nineteen years that this gentleman had done, the things that he wanted to do, to help the town, and build the relationships, to help the peace. He called me on, is it Saturday, Sunday? Saturday or Sunday, and mayor, why you see all the police here today, because these guys want to thank you for the moves that you have been making, I'll let him take this.
Well, one thing I would like to say, I don't think I've been officially sworn in as interim chief yet, but I guess that process is coming. I think about it, I've been here almost twenty years, and time has really plonked.
That's you, Mike.
And...
Mike, yeah, yeah.
I have been here almost twenty years, and over the twenty years, time has truly flown. When I got hired here twenty years ago, one of the least things on my mind, I would never have thought that I would be speaking with you as the chief of police. But now that I'm here, I want to think about the things that I did to put myself in this position. And the things that I did to put myself in this position was dedication, was loyalty, was the ability to get out there and bond with the residents of the city of Blue Island. It was the ability to go into the schools and reach the kids, because one of my main concerns is, the children here are our futures, and we want to make sure that they have everything that they need to be successful. That's one of my goals, and I promise you as chief, that I will not violate loyalty, respect, and commitment to the citizens of Blue Island, nor will I do anything to hamper the success of this department. And I appreciate each and every one of my officers that came out to support me. I don't know, it's heartfelt, and it almost made me want to break down in tears, but I am willing to promise I will do any and everything that it takes to move this department in a forward motion, to bridge the gaps between the citizens, as well as this council, the administration, the mayor's office, and all the aldermen. It's about us getting along and doing what's right to make Blue Island the best city with the possible, that's all I gotta say. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public comment? Now we move on. Report of city officials, presentations, resolutions. I read the following, finding the report of the removal of Mr. John Vida. On January the third, twenty eighteen, I remove Mr. John Vida as the Director of Public Health and Safety pursuant to the authority given to me by state statute, specifically chapter sixty-five, Illinois Compiles Statutes Five, diagonal three point one dash thirty-five dash ten. My reasons for the removal of Mr. John Vida as the Director of Public Health and Safety were provided to the city council in a memorandum dated January the third, twenty eighteen. In summary, my reasons for the removal are as follows. This appointed office was primarily responsible for overseeing and the management of the Police Department, the Fire Department, nine-one-one center, and the Blue Island Emergency Homeland Security Management Association. Based upon a review of the law and the municipal ordinances, I believe that the Police Department should be headed by a police chief, chief of police. Second, Mr. Vida did not possess a state mandated qualification to oversee or manage the Fire Department. And three, the Blue Island Homeland Security ESMA coordinator is required to have direct responsibility of that agency, therefore should not be managed or overseen by the Director of Public Health and Safety. Additionally, Blue Island no longer operates a nine-one-one center, so therefore management of same is no longer required. Based upon same, the Director of Public Health and Safety has become a non-essential office, and is not economically or legally feasible to continue to stand this office. That's my report. Appointment of LaSalle King. As I indicated, my reasons for the removal of the Director of Public Health and Safety have come to the league, based on our counsel, that the Blue Island Police Department must be headed by a chief of police. Again, on January the third, twenty eighteen, pursuant to the powers given to me on the state law, again, chapter sixty-five, Illinois Compiles Statutes Three Point One Dash Thirty Point Five, I temporarily appointed Blue Island Police Officer LaSalle King as the interim chief of police for the city of Blue Island. I chose to appoint Mr. LaSalle King to this position because he possesses the qualifications I believe are essential for being a chief of police. LaSalle King is well respected by both fellow officers in the community, as you can see around you. He has attained a master's degree in criminal justice, and has served the city well as a Blue Island police officer since nineteen ninety-eight. Most recently, he served as a corporal in the Police Department. He is a decorated Army veteran, the recipient of four Good Conduct medals. He held the rank of Sergeant First Class when he retired honorably after twelve years of service to our country in the Army, and fourteen years in the Armed Services Reserve. Though it is my hope and expectation that ultimately LaSalle King will be appointed as the permanent chief of police, I believe it is in the best interests of the city to conduct a search for this position to be transparent, and to set precedent in this city for finding and employing highly qualified individuals. At this time, I'm asking that the city council approve LaSalle King as interim chief of police. Do I have a motion? A motion by Alderman Malado, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any questions? Now, pro call.
Prost.
Aye.
Prost, aye, Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye, Dejada.
Aye.
Dejada, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Mr. King, would you step to the podium, please? I need you to swing around and raise your right hand, and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, LaSalle King.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed?
To the office of?
To the office of?
Chief of Police.
Chief of Police.
For the city of Blue Island.
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duty?
Of the office?
Of the office?
Of chief of police?
Of chief of police?
For the city of Blue Island?
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook?
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities?
So help me God. Congratulations.
I really thank you so much. Words cannot really say how I really feel right now. It's just a pleasure to have the opportunity to serve as your new chief, and I promise that I will do everything within my authority, within my power, to make sure that the citizens of Blue Island get the service that they need. And as you can see, we have all the support to do the job that the mayor set forth for us to do, and that job will be done, I promise. Thank you. One of the things that I have to do is find a replacement for me. Corporal Nevek has been very dedicated to this department, he's number one on the corporal list, and what better final officer could I have picked to replace me and my duties? Right now, we're going to appoint Corporal Nevek to the position of corporal. I think he's been stuck once, so I won't let you stick with your story, but let me read the oath.
Go ahead, it's all yours.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, David Nevek.
I, David Nevek.
Having been elected to the office of corporal?
Having been elected to the office of corporal?
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
And the county of Cook?
And the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the office of corporal?
That I will faithfully discharge the duty of the office of corporal?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, corporal.
Well, again, we made a historic day, but let me get off our list here. You know what day today is? Today's National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Since we're on the subject of law enforcement, I hate to discuss this, but I need to discuss it. Unfortunately, during the holiday season, we had a very tragic incident that ended here in the city of Blue Island, actually a couple of them, during the Christmas holiday. I became aware of it shortly after it happened, and I remember speaking to the dedicated Blue Island detectives, the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force, and the patrolmen in the city of Blue Island, and I made it clear to them, you have to solve this. You have to solve this case as soon as possible, not only for ourselves, but primarily for the family of the victim, especially during Christmas, it's not fair. That brought a negative light to the city of Blue Island, but in the long run, within three days, took four, but it would have been three, because of the holiday, they solved the case. That's it, a lot of dedication, lot of professionalism, and my hat goes out to all of you, every single officer in this department, and the surrounding departments, and law enforcement that helped to solve that incident, that case. And on behalf of that family, we appreciate what you did, the time dedicated, you're away from your families to do the right thing, and you did it, and the world knows it, Blue Island knows about it, Chicago knows about it, you did what you had to do for that family, and I thank you as the mayor of the city of Blue Island. Thank you. I'm going to stand up here, and we're going to move on to the next topic. Ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash zero-zero-one. It's an ordinance adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment for the city of Blue Island. I need a motion, and I need a second. Motion by Alderman Malado, second alderman, Rita. Any questions? Pro call, please.
Prost.
Aye.
Prost, aye, Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye, Dejada.
Aye.
Dejada, aye, Rita. Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. I'll move on to the topic number three on my agenda. Regarding civil service commission appointees, certain positions in the city of Blue Island and the Fire Department are regulated by civil service laws of the state of Illinois, again, chapter sixty-five, Illinois Compiles Statutes Five, diagonal ten dash one dash one, and require appointment of civil service commissioners to carry out the service, civil service rules and regulations, which includes examinations, appointments, and removals for certain positions in the Blue Island Fire and Police Departments respective. Currently vacancies exist on this commission, which by its state law must be filled. I would like the city council and public to know, and I repeat, that a civil service commissioner is an unpaid office. I ask that this item be removed from the agenda at this time, as I would like further time to review appointed requirements. Let me move on, since we have some guests here from Eisenhower High School, the dance team, and I'm going to ask the instructors, the coaches, to come up here and help me introduce these young men and ladies, who again are national champions from last year. Commissioner Eisenhower, and why are we here for?
Good evening, my name is Marion Castillo, I'm the head coach of the Eisenhower Dance Team. This is my assistant coach, Crystal Castillo, and our captain, Christian Corrello. Today, we are here to honor Chief King. Chief King has done a lot for not just us, and that live in the community, but for our children, and that's something that we greatly appreciate. Going back to middle school, going through that, you know, say no to drugs program, and that is something that we have appreciated, he is always there, our kids know that he is someone that they can go to, very well respected with everyone in the community, in the high school, and we greatly appreciate everything that he does for us. Our kids have been doing well, they started their season, we are in competitive season this weekend, we are at Argo High School, competing for conference, hoping once again to take the title. They have been working hard over break, we're hoping and praying, next week is sectionals, and hoping to make our way to state once again. They work very hard, and all we ask is for their commitment, their time, we come out, we help in the community whenever needed, so always please, feel free to, you know, contact me at school, we are always volunteering, as you can see, throughout the community, to show our support and our gratitude for everyone that comes out and helps us at every event that we attend. Thank you.
Another piece of noted information, Thornton Road is open. Yes, sir. So the shortcut is back. So Thornton Road was by Boy Ashland, correct? Yes, sir. Okay, so it's finally completed. A lot of things were completed this year, we want to thank everyone for their cooperation. I remember staying in front of you, either here or somewhere around the city, pardon our dust, but we did it, all working together, so we'll continue going forward. City clerk's business?
There's no business, right?
There's no business, Your Honor.
Any bids?
There's one bid that you're going to be hearing about by this department, or statutory commissions.
City treasurer?
Yes, Your Honor. All the questions you've raised, and then we will settle the first, seventeen. Need a motion? Need a motion? We got a motion by Alderman Donahue. Do I have a second, by Alderman Osling? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Nay.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. No ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any else? Thank you. City attorney?
No.
No report. Committee report, committee, development committee?
Uh, no report this week, Your Honor. Our next meeting is February eighth.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
Um, finance committee held a special meeting on December nineteenth. The committee voted for the following: approval of payroll for December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and fifteen cents. And they made a formal motion, city council.
There's a motion. Do we have a second, Alderman Holly? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Nay.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
No further business. The meeting was adjourned at seven fifteen. Our next regular meeting is January second, two thousand seventeen, uh, two thousand eighteen. Um, the January second, two thousand eighteen, members present were Alderman Holly, Alderman Frosto, Alderman Farrenwell, Thompson, Vera, and Osling. Also present were Eric Alvarez, Robinson Engineering, Lori Brown, Deputy Chief Finance, Treasurer Malado, Director Public Safety Rita, Director of Finance and Administration Mizell, City Clerk Quazer, Michael Brake, Musket Corporation. There was no public comment. There was a discussion on the Musket Corporation sewer to decrease their sewer rate. The committee will review and further discuss that at our next meeting on January sixteenth. We also had a resolution approving phase one and phase two of engineering agreement for Division Street Reconstruction Project. The grand total is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. The federal participation was seven hundred, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand and eight hundred. City of Blue Island's portion was one hundred and seventy-five thousand and two hundred. Blue Island's portion will come out of the TIF five, and I make a motion to city council.
You have a motion? Do we have a second, Alderman Malado? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Nay.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I also make a motion for the approval of accounts payable for December twentieth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and fourteen cents.
You have a motion? Do we have a second, Alderman Vera? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I also make a motion for a resolution for an agreement with Robinson Engineering and the city of Blue Island for the Division Street preliminary engineering service agreement, phase one and phase two, and reconstruction project.
You have a motion? Do we have a second, Alderman Vera? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I make a motion for the approval of the accounts payable for January tenth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of three hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
There's a motion? Is there a second, Alderman Frosto? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I also make a motion for the approval of the payroll for December twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
There's a motion? Do we have a second? Alderman Holly? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Two thousand eighteen combined sewer cleaning and televising project. The engineer's estimate was two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. The low bid sixty percent underestimated. Robinson Engineering recommended the low bid to National Power Rodding Corporation for ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. This money will come out of TIF three and the IFA bond. I make a motion for the approval of the two thousand eighteen sanitary combination sewer cleaning and television bid.
There's a motion? Is there a second, Alderman Vera? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malado.
Aye.
Malado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Nay.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
No further business. The meeting was adjourned at eight-ten. Our next meeting is January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, seven P.M. East Adams. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public health and safety committee?
Yes, Your Honor. This meeting from the minutes of the summer of the twelfth. President with Director John Rita, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Department Chief Dan Rita, Commander Kevin Sisk, Chief Don Marchbanks, Alderman George Coolas, Alderman Ken Pittman, Alderman Kevin Donahue, Alderman Desmond Johnson, and myself. Also attending were Mike Marzelle, Treasurer Carmine Malado, Alderman Slattery, and Sarah Kaiser. Meeting was called to order at six P.M. There was a motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting by Alderman Pittman, seconded by Alderman Donahue. Motion carried. There were no citizens present under the fire department. Chief Rita met with the majority of the fire department personnel to lay the groundwork for what his expectations are for the coming months. Chief Rita attended meetings regarding the New Year's Eve fall drop. The meeting was scheduled with Metro South Medical Center regarding safety procedures. The meeting was scheduled with the city attorney, finance director, and Director Rita of upcoming contract negotiations. Chief Rita reviewed the twenty seventeen budget in preparation for twenty eighteen appropriations, and the Natus twenty-two boxcars were in the process of being updated. Under maintenance, truck twenty-one oh four was out of service and will be under repair due to the air brakes starting Thursday, December fourteenth. Under community, the fire department attended Christmas parade and broke Mr. and Mrs. Claus in truck twenty-one oh four. Under the police department, in twenty eighteen, the police department will be reaching out in the following ways: reduce fear of crime in the community, better interaction with sergeants, corporals, and the community, the mentoring personnel, complete policy updates, and expanding the community policing unit. Under training, the majority of officers received humor training in psychology and tactics of violent encounters. Under community, the police department attended Christmas light parade. Under miscellaneous, the police department currently has one recruit for a full-time police officer opening. He will begin his psych polygraph and medical testing later in December. He is currently a full-time officer in the state of Texas. Also, the police department did give the twenty seventeen justice assistance grant. Under the nine-one-one center, Commander Sisk presented the final report to the nine-one-one center. He said that officers are very pleased with the new CAD system. Commander Sisk gave examples of various recording that can be done. He also explained the new smart nine-one-one service available. There was a discussion of donation of counterfeit designer clothing to a charity. Counterfeit designer clothing was confiscated from Spice of Life on Western Avenue. Deputy Chief Cornell wishes to donate the clothing to different charities. We have a release confiscate and destroy order signed off on by a judge. The police department has also checked with the state's attorney's office and the city attorney. There's a motion by Alderman Pittman, seconded by Alderman Donahue to give the clothing to charity.[1224.15] for what his expectations are for the coming months. Chief Rita attended meetings regarding the New Year's Eve fall drop. Meeting was scheduled with Metro South Medical Center regarding safety, safety procedures. Meeting was scheduled with the City Attorney, Finance Director, and Director Rita about upcoming contract negotiations. Chief Rita reviewed the twenty-seventeen budget, new preparation for twenty-eighteen appropriations, and the Navis Twenty-two Box Cards were in the process of being updated. Under maintenance, truck twenty-one oh-four was out of service and will be under repair with the air brakes starting Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Under community, the fire department attended Christmas parade and wrote this in Mrs. Claus in truck twenty-one oh-four. Under the Police Department, um, in twenty-eighteen, the Police Department will be reaching out in the following ways: reduce fear of crime in the community, better interaction with sergeants, corporals, and the community, on the inventory of personnel, complete policy updates, and expanding the community policing unit. Under training, the majority of officers received humor, training, and psychology, and tactics of violent encounters. Under community, the Police Department attended the Christmas light parade. Under miscellaneous, the Police Department currently has one recruit who are full-time police officer opening. He will begin his psych, polygraph, and medical testing later in December. He's currently a full-time officer in the state of Texas. Also, the Police Department did get the twenty-seventeen Justice Assistance Grant. Under the nine-one-one center, Commander Sisk presented the final report to the nine-one-one center. He said that officers are very pleased with the new CAD system. Commander Sisk gave examples of various recording that can be done. He also explained the new smart nine-one-one service available. There was a discussion of donation of counterfeit designer clothing to a charity. Counterfeit designer clothing was confiscated from Spice of Life on Western Avenue. Deputy Chief Cornell wishes to donate the clothing to different charities. We have a release, confiscate, and destroy order signed off on by a judge. The Police Department has also checked with the State's Attorney's Office and the City Attorney. There's a motion by Alderman Pittman, seconded by Alderman Donahue, to give the clothing to charity. All are in favor. Motion carried. There's a discussion of the memorandum of understanding with School District one forty-three and a half. I'd like to make a motion to, um, on the resolution number twenty-eighteen oh-oh-three, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Blue Island and Posen Robbins School District one forty-three and a half concerning the role of the emergency evacuation site.
We have a motion. We have a second by Alderman, that's with Johnson. Any questions? We'll call them, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Malato.
Aye.
Malato, aye. Vieta.
Aye.
Vieta, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Thirteen aces, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Under BAYIMA, BAYIMA took part in the Christmas light parade, but there was no report. Chief Marchbanks said that he would not use his personal computer for reports in case of a subpoena, and is asking the city for a computer to be donated. He also stated that BAYIMA vehicles are in great need of repair, and have repair, and needs for other equipment have been funded out of his own pocket. Director Rita stated that public events could not be held without help from BAYIMA, and asked that equipment for them be considered in the upcoming appropriations. In our monthly health and sanitation, in the month of November, twenty-three health and sanitation inspections were done. Donuts finer foods was warned that failure to uphold safety standards can result in closure of the restaurant portion of the business. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Donahue expressed great concern that Chief Rita is not residing in this position with the Fire Department in Timmy Park. Alderman Pittman and Director Rita seconded this concern. Chief Rita did not feel that this would be an issue. Director Rita said that Chief Rita confirmed that this was not discussed during the interview process, and how it would affect services to Blue Island. Alderman Carr commended Deputy Chief Cornell on the high level of training that officers receive on a monthly basis. Alderman Johnson asked if the recruit from Texas had diversity training. Deputy Chief Cornell said that he had training and would be receiving additional training in compliance with Blue Island Police Department standards. Alderman Johnson asked if coffee with a cop could be held at the substation at the John D. Rita Recreation Center. Director Rita said it would be set up for a day that Alderman Johnson could attend. Alderman Johnson also expressed concern about public safety and rock around the clock, which at that time is coming up. And Alderman Johnson asked about water resources held from the gardens, and asked about replacing stop signs in his ward. Director Rita said he would refer this to municipal services. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Coolis, seconded by Alderman Pittman. Meeting was adjourned at six fifty-seven. Our next meeting will be February the thirteenth at six P.M. here in East Enix.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee, any report?
Uh, no report, Your Honor. Our next meeting will be January twenty-third, twenty-eighteen, here in East Enix, at six o'clock. Um, but I did want to announce, um, the award that the Public Works will be getting tomorrow. Uh, the City of Blue Island will accept an American Public Works Association Project of the Year Award on January tomorrow, um, for the May twenty-seventeen emergency repair of the combined sewer beneath one hundred twenty-seventh Street. During routine cleaning and televising, maintenance of the city's combined sewers, a large sinkhole was discovered beneath one hundred twenty-seventh Street, which conveys over twenty-seven thousand vehicles per day. The sinkhole would have collapsed if it was not identified, leaving a nineteen-foot-deep by sixteen-foot-wide void in the roadway when the undetermined pavement could no longer support the weight of the vehicles, including heavy traffic. Sorry, heavy truck traffic. These vehicles travel at speeds of thirty-five, forty miles per hour. It would have been a disaster for the traveling public. There is no doubt that this could have caused major injuries and even fatalities. The damages could have been well over tons of millions of dollars. This was all prevented by simple maintenance operation, fast proactive response by the city's Public Works Department, and the city's strict asset management policy, and, um, to Robinson Engineering, so.
We want to congratulate you. Anything else, Alderman?
No, that's it.
Uh, Judiciary Committee?
Yes, Your Honor. Judiciary Committee met Monday, December eighteen, in East Enix, all the board, at six oh-one P.M. Present were Alderman Farinwell, Coolis, and Viara, absent were Alderman Pittman and Slattery. Also present were Deputy Chief Mike Cornell, Leslie Kennedy of Wilkston Stark, Michael Marzel, Director of Finance and Administration, and John Weir, Director of Public Safety. There was no public comment. Uh, there was a discussion of a proposed cannabis ordinance. Attorney Kennedy, Director Rita, Deputy Chief Cornell, and Director Marzel contributed to a discussion on the city's authority to enact the ordinance that would provide misdemeanor penalties in violation of possession of small quantities of cannabis. Attorney Kennedy will draft an ordinance for review at every Judiciary Committee meeting at the request of the committee. There was additional discussion about the potential for enacting the city ordinance for driving out insurance, and Attorney Kennedy will research if the city is empowered to take such action, and report at the next Judiciary Committee meeting at the request of the committee. Deputy Chief Cornell will forward to the committee a letter from the State's Attorney's Office about enacting ordinances to prosecute drivers' licenses that are suspended for financial violations such as giving unpaid tickets, because the state will no longer prosecute these violations. Fifth item, discussion of periodic renewal requirements for handicap parking spaces. Uh, Director Rita explained that the number of handicap parking spaces is unknown, and many of these spaces are probably no longer required. Given the shortage of street parking available, it would be helpful to have a process for annual renewal of the spaces. Alderman Viara requested that Attorney Kennedy review the current ordinance and the information that applicants require to provide. Might just go off notes here for just a moment, note that this, uh, investigation did uncover that there actually is an ordinance requiring, uh, annual review of handicap spaces, and we will discuss this at the next committee, probably to recommend that, uh, ordinance be enforced, uh, going forward. So folks, we have handicap spaces to be aware. Number, item number six, discussion of the City of Blue Island ordinance review and updating. Attorney Kennedy and Director Marzel affirmed that the city's ordinance should be updated, and that it is important that a single database, including all ordinances, should be established and maintained. Director Marzel will consult with the, uh, City Clerk on this matter, as well as an initial review of the associated costs, and present additional information at the next committee meeting at the request of the committee. Director Rita also noted that the city's liquor license structure is largely outdated, and Attorney Kennedy agreed, adding that our fees are not aligned with those of other municipalities, and are generally much lower. The committee requested that more specific information be presented about the situation. There were no Alderman concerns. Uh, there was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Coolis, seconded by Viara, and passed at six fifty P.M. The next meeting of the Judiciary Committee will be Monday, January twenty-second, and I correct the minutes here, it's in January fifteen, is Monday, January twenty-second, twenty-eighteen, at six P.M. Thank you very much.
Uh, any other medical announcements or comments? Alderman Pittman, go ahead.
Uh, as you know, I remember my pet peeve is the sidewalk on one hundred twenty-seventh Street overpass.
In fact, as you saw, they did, uh, they claimed that one.
This year, I want to commend the postal for an outstanding job. Not one time did I see a person walking in the street.
Correct.
And I go that way every day to work.
We seen that, and we appreciate that, and continue to do great work over there. Thank you. That one, and also the Western Avenue Bridge, I have to say, I think that one also. Good. Any other? Alderman, go ahead.
Yes, Chief. Um, I wanted to thank everybody who came out and made the event at the, uh, Recreation Center possible for Christmas. You know, a lot of us, um, you know, so busy with our families and things of that nature,